All right, sorry for the delay. We were finishing up labor negotiations. We are going to call to order right now at 6:11 for the special meeting in regards to Jackson property, the proposed Jackson Avenue apartment project. We're here, we can't say much back to you, but we definitely want to hear what you have to say. It's important. So, how many people want to speak? We have tonight. One, two, three. You see three?
Six or seven.
Six or seven. And how much time do we have?
Seven.
Fifty minutes.
Okay, so fifty. They have about six minutes each, okay. All righty then, it looks like we'll have right around five or six minutes a person. So whoever would like to...
Yeah, and Mayor, I'll just do an introduction. Thank you. Jalen French, City Manager. The purpose of this meeting, community workshop, really as the Mayor was mentioning, to gather input from the community on a proposed project, and I'll go over the proposed project here in a second. Prior to the council's deliberation, this item is currently slated for the April 21st City Council meeting, but we wanted to provide an opportunity for the public to speak prior to the item actually being on the agenda. The intent of that is to get input from you. We will take notes and be able to address any questions, comments, concerns, to the extent that we can, in the staff report that will be in front of the council. You also have another opportunity to speak, of course, in front of the council on April 21st, as they deliberate on the item, if the item stays on. This is an additional opportunity to share information. So quickly, I will go over the project. We did receive a project application for a project called the Jackson Avenue Apartments. It is on Jackson Avenue or 120, easterly of Elizabeth, north of 120. It is an approximately 0.89 acre lot, less than one acre lot, and the proposal is for two 900 square foot commercial pads and 17 one to three bedroom apartment units. It is a two-story apartment complex that is proposed. You can see the layout here. North is heading towards the left side of the screen. Elizabeth Avenue is on the bottom of the screen. Jackson Avenue or 120 is on the right side of the screen. Your two commercial pads are facing Jackson Avenue, closest to Jackson Avenue, and then your apartments are behind and sort of on top of the commercial pads. You have ingress and egress from Jackson Avenue on the top of the screen, as well as on the left side of the screen onto Elizabeth Avenue, and you have parking on the far east side of the project. You have both parking for commercial spaces and for residential spaces, as well as covered parking under the building. So that is the proposed project. The project before the council would, will be a planned development that is, in essence, a rezone. The project is zoned, or the property is zoned commercial. C2, it's commercial, it's intended for commercial uses. High-density residential, which this is proposing, is an allowed use in the C2 zone with the provision of a planned development. And so that is what the project applicant is proposing. Go to some of the very large color elevations. We'll just share these real quick, and then we can get into public comment. So these are the elevations, you know, kind of looking from the driveway, Elizabeth Avenue. With that, would be, point of the meeting really is to then collect comments from the public.
All righty, who would like to go first? Don't be bashful.
Yeah, question first?
If you want to go first, you can come up, ask your question.
Well, I'm Dixie Woodward, and I live in Almond Grove. This is my first experience seeing something like this, which scares the living heck out of us. Is there going to be a stoplight at Elizabeth and 120?
A stoplight is not proposed at this time.
That's unfortunate. That would be helpful, because that corner and that whole area is chaotic with traffic, with what's there already, and from most of us in Almond Grove, who are senior citizens, have a really hard time getting on 120 already, most of the time. So you're saying that there's going to be apartments? Are they going to be facing 120?
They will largely be facing Elizabeth Avenue and the parking lot.
And the parking lot, okay. So is nothing facing 120?
The two commercial pads are facing 120.
Two commercial pads. Well, I'm not really totally prepared for this, because I just heard about it, and my first instinct, to be very honest, it's insane. If you're going to have a bunch of apartments with three bedrooms, that means kids, that means families, and coming out, whether they're coming out on Elizabeth or they're coming on, they still got to get on 120 to get somewhere. So that puts a heck of a lot of traffic more. And people coming in on 120 and going out on 120 are usually going 40 and 50 miles an hour, right there. Once they hit that gas station, they are zooming to Oakdale. And that's why one of the things is difficult. The ones coming in are doing the same thing, and they don't slow down until they get past, you know, the gas stations and all that kind of stuff. So I can't imagine having 17 units? And the amount of families that would be in those, I take it it's just families? Or people, not seniors, or it's not a specific senior thing?
Correct.
Okay.
Not designated.
So that makes it even worse than we, you know, we're talking about kids. We're talking about the school buses that come on Elizabeth, and trying to get on 120, or turning into one, you know, off of 120, whatever. So that just seems, from my standpoint, thinking about, all my grandkids are in high school and probably through, but I see a lot of kids on that corner with, you know, with their families and stuff. And I can't imagine 17 more families with that many kids, and where the buses are going to be able to stop and pick them up, or whatever they might try to get to their school system, and so on and so forth. So, all I can say is, I think it's a very, very dangerous idea of having apartments on 120, or anywhere near 120 at this point, unless you have some kind of a signal and there's some kind of sources of being able to, you know, get on any of the highways that we have, McHenry or anything else, without some kind of signals or some kind of thing to make it at least a little bit easier. So, to me, the apartment complexes should be zoned someplace within the outer side of Escalon and say, you know, make a zoning for apartment complexes somewhere that's reasonable within a residential sort of area, but not on our main, not on our main, 120 or McHenry and that sort of thing. So, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Dixie. Who would like to go next?
Okay, it's really difficult to see. So clarify for me, the two buildings that are facing Jackson, those are the two pads for business. Am I correct?
Yeah, can you see the cursor?
I can hear, back there.
Yeah.
Even with my glasses. Okay, and then behind the two pads for businesses, those are the apartments, correct?
Yes, Sherry.
Okay. And right across the street would be Orlando's. If I'm looking at it correctly, it looks like it's set back from Jackson 30 feet, and then off of Elizabeth, I think I saw 15 feet. I'm using rough, if I'm off a foot or two.
Yes, 15 feet.
Okay, so 30 foot is more than enough to be at a stop sign to see traffic coming. And there's already houses there, so I don't really see an issue with 17. I, for one, am really positive about this particular adventure, because we need housing, we've already got residents right there, we've got business, so the business is actually facing Jackson, not the apartments. There's a house right directly behind Orlando's, none of those people on Elizabeth, they're really, they're no closer, you know, than these apartments are going to be, maybe a few feet. We have homes that are, go down right here downtown, before you get to the high school, there's houses on the corner. There's houses on 120. So I understand, you know, the want for a light, and I think safety issue, that's fine, but I don't think that should be the deciding factor on housing and business, and especially in a lot that has been empty. You know, you've got somebody that wants to develop it. We've got the state breathing down our neck. If we don't put in some residents here, you know, residential properties, we're going to, they're going to do it. And so we're going to lose control of our city. So we need to really choose and decide what battles we want to battle. And if we put a halt on something like this, the state's going to come in and do it for us, and we're not going to have any say over our community. So I understand some of the different arguments, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's not going to be apartments above businesses. Is that correct?
Well, above the two, yeah, I do think there is two just above that business.
Above the two facing Jackson, there might be apartments above those businesses. Okay. Downtown, I hate to, I don't hate to say Manticca.
You mean directly stacked on top?
But, you know, you go, a lot of places in a lot of the older cities, almost all of them have residents on top of business, whether people realize it or not. You go into some of the older cities, they're all, they all have residents above, and they're much more affordable than a home or a regular apartment building. So it would be interesting to know what affordable is here, because, you know, $1,700 and $2,000 is not affordable for everyone, but we definitely need more housing, and it's not, it's not like we're putting a house on 120. So I would say, you know, proceed with caution, but proceed by all means, because again, it's going to be taken out of our hands if we don't get a little more proactive on residential properties. Okay.
Thank you, Sherry. Who would like to go next? I thought I saw more than two hands, but, oh, there we go.
I don't live in this area, so it's not affecting me as bad. I do agree that the traffic is already hard in that area. I know that the crosswalk lights up to where people crossing, but people fly through there, so I think maybe something to consider. I'm very confused by the drawings. You have, the first looks like Sheet 1, and then Sheet 2 is, can you tell me the difference between the two of them? It looks like the same thing. Or is this supposed to be the second floor view of it? It's just based on each one, it's very confusing to see how many units total there are going to be, and...
I believe there's 17 total. Want to speak to that?
Yeah, here's a better, a better view. Essentially, on the, on the top, you have the two commercial pads, and then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10.
So the top sections are the first floor plans, and then if you look at the two at the bottom, so there's Building A and Building B. The top two plans are Building A, Building B, first floor. So the commercial pads are contained within the footprint of Building B. So the first floor is the commercial area of Building B. Then if you go to the two below that, Building A has the three-bedroom, two-bath, and then Building B has the two-bedroom, two-bath.
I see that. And the parking in the back, is that one space per each box? Because that doesn't seem like adequate parking, and Elizabeth Street already is bottlenecked with the, if you go there at night, you see there's a lot of cars on the street. So each one of those boxes is in fact one parking stall? And is there designated handicap parking?
Yes, there are, there are covered spaces, footprint of the building, as is shown here. And then there is...
Can you show me, I don't see where you're...
See, parking, 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 so...
Yes, I see that. I just am asking, is each box one parking space?
It looks like there's 13 spots, is that right?
And, 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 and there's parking across the street. So this is generally for the commercial area, this is the remaining parking required for the residential. The project has the exact amount of parking spaces needed per our code.
Which is how many per unit?
Essentially, two per unit.
And they will be guaranteed that?
No.
Is it first come, first served? Is it permitted? Is, do they need to pay for it?
I mean, I think that could be determined at a later date, based on operations and, what would you call it, management of the apartment. But no, generally, in apartment complexes, those that are, you know, sort of on the street in the parking lot, are first come, first served.
Okay, in between the commercial space, and then in between the buildings, it looks, is that an alleyway, or what is that space going to be?
That is a stair access to the top floors.
An external stair, or is it inside? And what is the rest of the space? Just dead space?
See, here, it's, it's a hallway. You can see here where the...
But on the ground floor, it wouldn't, would it be an indoor hallway?
It looks open, at this point, in the rendering, it looks open.
But it's covered by the roof because of the second-story apartment.
I understand. I'm more concerned at what's going to be on ground level. Is this going to be a place that kids can go behind there and smoke a joint? You know, or, I mean, homeless are living in there. There's, if it's just open, or is it going to be enclosed? Also, is there going to be limitation on what can go in the commercial space? Are we going to have another smoke shop or redundant business? Or are we looking for a specific business that will be in that spot?
Not yet, no. The city has not said, and again, that'll be up to management of the property. We do have an ordinance limiting where smoke shops can go, and this would not be an allowable use, because it's so close to residential. But we have not, no one has determined what the uses will be for those commercial pads.
Okay, two more questions. One, on the landscape part, I guess, and this would be a question for you guys. It just says landscape. Is it possible to have like a playground? I assume that this is going to be housing families, and there's no playground in that area. It would be nice to, if you're going to build it, have at least something for kids within the units to play. And then my last question is, is this going to be restricted to, are we going to have low income, or is, are Escalon residents going to get priority? Are we going to have it just senior citizens, or just families?
So first question first. This is the original proposal. The applicant is now proposing a play structure in this area, and then a covered picnic bench seating area in this area. So they are proposing that.
But that's not reflected on these plans. My concern is that if I don't, we don't see it on here, is it actually going to come to fruition?
Yeah, this was pulled from the website. This is the original proposal, yes. Those plans have been submitted, and those will be in front of the council on the 21st.
And will that park be limited to just the residents, or anyone in the community?
I mean, technically, it's open, but you can't really, can't really limit it unless there's some sort of fence in a key entry or something, which they may choose to do. And then quickly reset your second question, I'm sorry, I just...
What's, when, I assume these are rentals, right? They're not for sale, so are Escalon residents going to get priority? Is this, are we going to have a certain amount reserved for families or elderly? How many, if any, are going to be, are low income, and if they'll be subsidized or Section 8? I think those are all concerns.
Real quick question. We're at 7:30, so we want to make sure we get, finish the answer, and then go from there.
Yeah, the proposal is currently market rate for all, well, 15 of the 17 units. The city's inclusionary housing ordinance requires that two units are affordable in some manner, and so those can be moderate level or low income. The applicant hasn't specifically shared what level they are proposing those two units at, but two units will be affordable.
Can there be any guarantee that Escalon residents get priority for renting? Or is that something you can't?
It's something that's, we've, we've, we can try to encourage, but under the Fair Housing laws, it's very difficult to enforce, because, because state housing laws, you need to make sure that there's fair and equitable housing for all. It's something that we can look at, we've, we've explored some incentive programs and things like in the past, but I don't even know if the applicant is exploring that here specifically. So we...
So would it be up to the developer to decide, or is that still, we have to play by the California law?
It's, it's something where we'd have to play by California law, and we'd also, but you wouldn't be able to even explore some of the incentives or things you could do if the developer's not willing. So it's both and. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Gabrielle. Who else is out here that would like to speak? All righty.
Hello, how's it going? My name is PJ Kinda.
PJ, thanks for coming tonight, PJ.
Appreciate it, yeah. The developer for this project here, appreciate it. Gabrielle came up in here, you know, kind of went over all the high-level things for this project. First and foremost, I want to address some of the concerns the residents do have for this. I understand, you know, traffic mitigation and everything else, but, I mean, biggest thing I want to say is, like, if you go on Zillow right now, you look up properties for rent, and Escalon is about two, two only. So, you know, as we all know, California is going through a major housing crisis, and we need more rental units, whether, another resident that came up here too, is like, the state at this point is mandating every city to have a certain amount of units, right? So we could go up there, we could put another gas station, right? Orlando's is there, Quick Service is there. I don't know what that's going to do. Another gas station, people coming in and out, speeding out, I think that's going to add even more, you know, more of those kind, people coming in and out, at least with an apartment. People are coming in and out at certain times, for the most part. You know, we actually have more parking spaces, that's actually, that we have to do. We have about 1.8 parking spaces per unit for this project here. We have also added that common area there for, you know, as, you know, play structure, other courtyard area and everything else. And also, I think there's some misconception here that the whole thing is low income, that's not true at all. It's about two units that are low income. And I know Gabrielle had also brought something up about, you know, Escalon residents. Unfortunately, under the Fair Housing Act, I mean, we'd love to do something like that, but we can't be all like, hey, this is for Escalon residents. You know, of course, we can get creative here, do some type of pre-leasing marketing for the residents, before it actually gets leased out to everyone else, say, hey, look, we're having these units come out, would anyone be interested for them? You know, that's something we can definitely look into. But, you know, lastly, like I said, you know, we understand the concerns for this, and we've looked very carefully into this, but I don't think putting up another gas station when there's one in front of you, one on the right of you, would make the most sense for a city where housing is a major crisis, so...
Okay, thank you, PJ. Anyone else like to say anything? Yes, I think we do. Hold on one sec. It's 6:30, right? Yeah, we have to...
Hi, my name is Renee Snow. Listen, hearing everybody's, the things, I came to the first meeting with the planning commission, and it opened up a lot, you know, I understood a little bit more when I left, and was able to get an understanding of what was going to be here. We can say and complain, say, the parking, the traffic, the things, the things. Two things were flip-flopped to me, or seemed wishy-washy. When I first met this gentleman, with Ed Als, it was told, oh, I'd like to put a car wash in there. And then the apartment things came in. Saying that it's 1.8 parking spaces, how, who has 1.8 cars? It's going to be two vehicles. If you have guests, if you have more than two vehicles that reside in your home, I live in a home that has five vehicles at my house. So those cars are going to be parked on Elizabeth, or they're going to be parked in Orlando's parking lot. Unless you live on Elizabeth, California, the 120, you're not, that's not going to affect you at all. The other concern is, oh, it's going to be single-family housing, then it was going to be, oh no, this is geared for families. But then when the issue came up of the, how many people are going to be there, then it looks, okay, well, how many grade school levels are you adding to, can they even accommodate that? Is it going to be charter schools, things like that? What was the second thing? We, I am, I did start a petition, I don't know if that has any say in it, but, you know, it's, I have it out there. What was the other thing? The petition, the traffic, I mean, I don't know. The thing that I, oh, I knew, no, I know, I see. Is removing this C2 zoning, which makes it a commercial property, is going to leave it open for this property to be anything, and we wouldn't have the control, you guys wouldn't have the control over it, of what is going to be there. There's a similar thing that happened in Riverbank on Morale Street, where it was a home that a church took over, and if you go and look at it now, they have 12, like, tiny homes parked on it now. And that supposedly is supposed to be for seniors, or, I don't want, what, I don't know if it's drug people that, like, are rehabilitating, but it's all in front of six residential houses. And that was approved, and if you drive by that, I have some pictures of it. It just, it's just not the fit in that location. I'm absolutely saying that, yes, we all need housing. Maybe just this lot isn't it. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Anyone else like to say anything? Go on once, go on twice? City manager? Do we have any, or, sorry, Michelle, do we have anything online? No? Okay. Ooh, come on up.
I just wanted to say, on the, not so much on the, even though we need housing, I'm kind of agreeing with Renee and Dixie in a way that, I don't think the housing should be there. Commercial, and that's what it was zoned for... Commercial, and that's what it was zoned for, I think commercial is fine. And I don't, if it's commercial, they usually have to have it, you know, like they were saying, another gas station there or another. But if you have, usually you have to kind of confer with other businesses on if there's another gas station on top of another gas station. So, preferably, I think the commercial is fine, but I'm not so much on the housing, how they were talking. Doing the two. It is zoned for that and they want to rezone it to get that. I think the residence things should be in another area where it's not really off of 120. That's my opinion on it.
Okay. Thank you, Linda. Any, anyone else like to say anything? PJ, would you like to come back up for, to speak to the questions or anything?
Of course. Yeah, so one thing I want to kind of add as well, I know, you know, that one of the concerns is that like, oh, a lot of families living here. You know, there's only one unit that's going to be a three-bedroom, two-bath, right? Everything else is going to be a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom. And usually when you have a one or two-bedroom, I mean, mostly it's going to be about two cars per unit, right? I know if you're living in a normal house and stuff, yeah, you might see those three, four, five cars and all that other good stuff that's going to come with the house. And then, you know, also too, you know, the whole situation with the landscaping as well, I talked last meeting about this as well. That's something we're working out with the landscaping engineer as well, like what are we going to put there? Shrubs, trees, some type of privacy we can add for the residents there. So, you know, wanted to address those concerns right there and as well, yeah. So mostly just want to address the whole concern, like a lot of families, there's only one unit that's going to be three-bedroom. So everything else is going to be a one-bedroom, a two-bedroom, so.
Can you speak to the, the car wash thing? What was that about?
Yeah, so I, I know the resident, you know, last time brought that up again about me, that she saw me at Orlando's. As you know, when you're, when you're developing a property, you have all different types of things, right? You want to rather build a car wash or gas station, right? Whatever it may be. You know, we have a gas station, right? Of course, we'd want to build another gas station, but like I said, I, I really don't, when we drove by that property, I really don't see the sense when there's a gas station here and one next to you and we pop up another one there. And I understand the whole thing about a car wash as well, that wants to come there, but down the street, there's another car wash there. We just thought the best case scenario for this was to, you know, build some multifamily units for the housing crisis, is what we thought was best.
Council, you have any questions?
Have you considered what sort of commercial enterprise you would put in the 900 square foot commercial area?
Of course, I brought that up last time. That's something that we want to talk to the residents about, like what do they want to see come there for businesses, right? Same thing, we talked about the whole pre-marketing it to the Escalon residents for the apartments. That's another thing we'd want to talk to them as we start developing this. What business would they want to see come over there that would make the best sense for the city?
One question I have also, hypothetically, have you humored the idea of developing it commercially without the residential? Is that even a thought?
Like having only commercial, no residential?
Correct.
Definitely have looked into that. Like I said, we've explored ideas like a car wash and stuff like that, but after looking around the city and seeing what it needs, we really thought that putting some housing there for, you know, for people to come in to live there, work out of there from, you know, go wherever is the best case scenario for that. Also, when you have people living there in multifamily, they're going to go to Orlando's, they're going to buy gas, they're going to buy grocery, they're going to go to the shopping center across the street and shop there. So, you know, when you do add this, it is also going to indirectly or directly add revenue to the city as well.
Okay.
Mayor, can I ask another question?
Yeah.
So, I believe you held a community meeting last summer about this project, is that correct?
Yes.
How did you send invitations to that meeting?
Yeah, so that meeting there, like I said, I tried to send it over to the, tried to be on the Escalon's residence page. I don't have, at that point, I had access to it. So I just had kind of people like market it out. It wasn't as successful as we thought it to be. So weren't able to get as much traction as we'd want to get from that meeting.
How many people attended that meeting?
I don't know, probably about 10. Less than this from here, but, yeah.
Any other questions from the dais?
Are you guys planning on opening businesses in those two storefronts yourselves or renting them out?
Renting them out.
Anything else? All righty. Anything else out there before we close it down? Got one over there. Thank you, PJ.
Cheryl Schultz, I live on Jessica Circle. I just wanted to know if our petition that we have going is going to have any impact, any effect? We're getting close to 200 other residents that are disputing this development. Is it going to have any impact at all?
Yeah, I think input is always going to allow us to make better, well-educated decisions, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, anything else out there? All right. Anything else back here? All right, then I guess we'll call it. Appreciate you guys' time coming out here, everyone being, you know, real good about putting in their two cents and I get, these things get emotional sometimes, so I do appreciate you being critical thinkers and bringing us a lot of information. All righty, then we'll call it at 6:47.